Good afternoon. This is Sandy. And I want to welcome everybody here today. And glad to see all of you on this heated afternoon. I'm gonna do a roll call, so we know you have a floor. Jimmy is voting member here. Candace, another voting member here. Ray, for those of you who may not know, Ray was in a serious automobile accident. And he cannot drive for two weeks. He was lucky. The only part of his wrist, he got some scratches on his face, but we are thinking about him and we wish him the best. Wallace is supposed to be here by soon. We hope he'll get here in a little bit. Mickey's here. And I'm here. And we do have a floor because we have Jimmy, Mickey, and myself. All right, I need to make an amendment to the agenda. On number six of your agenda, where it talks about our committees. I'm going to be more of a motion than a vote. To approve those committees, they're board appointed. So. Then on number seven. Adoption for 2425. Removing the Personnel Report. C to after number 11, which will be a closed session for personnel. So those two things. And. With those amendments, do I hear a motion to adopt? Jimmy? Is there any discussion? Does everybody understand that two changes were made? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, minutes for May 9th, 2024. Do you have copies of those minutes? It better not be. Does anybody have anything they want to add for? Anything about the minutes? If you had a chance to look at them? Okay, do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Okay. I have a second. Okay, any discussion on those minutes? If not, if you approve, raise your hand. Okay. All right, we are up to. Mr. Campbell and some legal updates for us as the world swirls. There it was.
This is Chris. And if the legislature will stop changing the law on the day of board meetings, I'll stop giving you memos on the day of board meetings. In all seriousness, my apologies for again giving you a memo the day of the meeting. And Wallace, good to see you. We'll email you a copy of this memo in just a few minutes as well. And but the memo does have an update, changes that were made by amendment on the House side, I think as recently as yesterday. And my understanding is that the legislation is currently before the Senate in committee. Is that right, or on the Senate floor?
Not sure.
We know it's at the Senate. It's either, yeah, we know it's in the Senate. So final changes, but I have in this memo the latest changes, potential changes that we know about. But before we do that, let me give you a brief update on policy. So looking at the memo that you have in front of you, I have listed for your convenience this afternoon, the policies that the Policy Committee is prepared to recommend later today that the Board adopt today, so that you can start business on these crucial issues regarding board authority and board governance. The only policy that we'll have some additional discussion as far as a different process, just to give you a heads up, would be Policy 1310, which is parent involvement. That policy has several provisions from the Parents' Bill of Rights along with some other policies that are impacted by the Parent Bill of Rights. And I believe that Madam Chair would like to have some discussion about whether you want to have a special committee to review that Policy 1310 further. And I would recommend you do all of the Parent Bill of Rights policies as part of that particular special committee. And I think I'll let her speak to that later today, but certainly, parent involvement being such an important part of the school. A lot of those issues are in that policy. So you'll see the 1000 and the 2000 series. There were recommended changes from the committee on the policy in the 2000 series regarding board meetings, which is Policy 2300. And when we get to that, there are just a few minor changes for clarity. They are not substantive changes at all. I'll review those changes as well. Additionally, for policies on the second page of the memo, you'll see that next, your administration, your director, Mr. Patrick, the same, your HR director and your administration will be working with the Personnel Committee next to look at the 7000 series of policies. Those are the policies dealing with personnel. And they will propose a schedule of those policies after they have a chance to get into them a little bit more. And then the Policy Committee. Well, Dr. Tate and her group, and again, Mr. Patrick and the administration, will be moving on to the 4000 series of policies. Excuse me, Mick. Ms. White is the chair of that particular committee. They'll be looking at the 4000 series of policies for students. In addition, I have listed, just as a reminder, the policies I've listed under paragraph D. These are policies that for one reason or another were specifically called out in the legislation. So I will be getting a legal version of the 7000 series, the 4000 series, and these additional policies to the Policy Committee and to the Personnel Committee and to Mr. Patrick and the administration for review next. That's what we'll move on to next, as far as that's concerned. And I'll stop right there and see if there are any questions regarding policies or where we're headed policies. It will be a long process, so just get ready. Okay, key issues from pending Senate Bill 90 as of 4/15 on June 25th of 2024. We do expect Senate Bill 90 in some form or fashion to pass probably this week or very shortly in the Senate. It does not contain any money whatsoever. Any funding for the school will be in the budget. So we will have to wait and see what happens with the budget. And I know that Mr. Patrick's already planning on continuing to spend at current levels until we get a budget, which is the typical way to approach that. So if you flip the page, here are the things I can tell you about the current changes to the law. First of all, administratively, the current version says that the school will be governed by the Board of Trustees as of July 1st. However, the school will continue to receive administrative support through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction until June 30th of 2025 at the latest. Then the Department of Administration going forward will become the Administrative Support Department for the school. So the school will be independently governed, but as far as administrative support for HR, personnel, technology, procurement, those issues, that will be through the Department of Administration. And the reason for that delay is number three there, the DPI, the Office of Budget and Management, the Office of State Controller, and the Department of Administration. Will all be working with the three schools to do what is necessary to establish each school as a separate state agency. So you will be administratively established as a separate state agency. That's going to take some time to align the accounts, to get the software in place, to do the training. So we, it looks like we have up to a full year to get that done. And I know that Mr. Patrick can speak to that, but that's a welcome change to provide a little extra time. Let me stop right there and see if Mr. Patrick wants to add anything about working with DPI or the BOA change. Or anything you want to add there?
No, there's, there's not. We, we're just gonna have to continue with the relationship that we have to make sure that we can, you know, keep business going. So.
Okay, this is Chris again. So the insurance changes. DPI is now going to include the school in any policies that it purchases for its employees and for the department regarding professional liability, workers' compensation, property and liability. The school would also, and these are all the pending changes, the school would authorize, be authorized to purchase group accident and health, not only for employees, but for students as well. So that's something that we'll have to look into. And then the school would be authorized to purchase director and officer's coverage specifically for the directors and for the board members. So that's an additional coverage that would apply to members of the Board of Trustees and some of the senior directors. I like to tell folks as an attorney, the way problems get solved in the modern world is through insurance. So when there are serious issues or when people are harmed or their rights are violated, the way that we can resolve those cases is typically through insurance. So that's an important piece of the puzzle to include. As far as liability, everyone can feel good that employees of the school and the Board of Trustees have the same immunity as the State Board of Education. So as long as you are acting in your official capacity and you are doing so without any malice, any bad faith or any ill intent, then you continue to have the same immunities as state officials do when it comes to your official actions. So that is an excellent immunity to have. And the school is covered by the State Court Claims Act. So if there were to be an accident and injury at the school, it would be compensated and administrated in the State Court Claims Act like any other state agency. So those are changes that we specifically asked for that have been added, and that's a good thing. Funding says specifically that the school is eligible for grants or any statewide systems of support. Don't ask me what a statewide system of support is. I have no idea what the statewide system of support is when it comes to money, but I know what it's not. What it's not is number two. And that is any of the specific funding allotments that come from the General Assembly to school boards, the local administrative units. And that is because this school receives direct state funding. So it's not necessary for you to also receive state allotment. Under governance, we're clarifying a few things through the General Assembly, that no employee can also be a Board of Trustees member. That's usually an accreditation requirement and also a good governance requirement. And a quorum for purposes of meeting will be a majority of the voting members of the board. So it would be at least three of the voting members of the board would have to be present for there to be a meeting. And then as of yesterday, a House change, and I think this has to do with pay scales and other things that were uncertain at the time. They've decided to put off calling the school director's superintendents for one year to make that transition for one year. So the director of each school, of all three schools, will continue to be the director. And they've put off any change to superintendent until July 1 of 2025. Couple of other additional miscellaneous changes. Local school administrative units, school boards will continue to have the freeing of public education requirement, legal liability under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That liability and that obligation will stay with local school boards until this school actually enrolls a student. So while a student is going through the admissions process, if the student has applied and the student's family has applied to come here, the law makes it clear that this school does not assume any liability for that child until that child is actually accepted and enrolled here at the school. So that was a good change. The final Board of Trustees J-Loq report, which I know Ms. Turner's gonna address, is not due until September 1st. They've pushed that back to give you time to finalize that report. And then something else I know she wants to discuss with you is a group called the NC Collaboratory has been asked to work with all of the state agencies involved in each of the schools to look and study costs and positions and make a report on efficiencies to the General Assembly by March 1 of 2025. That is a pretty straightforward proposition that I know that the Chair wants to have some more discussion with. But how much money the school needs to operate now that you are an independent state agency versus part of DPI is something that no one has a real good idea. No one can quantify that with any certainty. So this group, the NC Collaboratory, has been asked to study that and make a report back to the General Assembly in March of next year. So Madam Chair, that is the update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is Sandy. This is Sandy. There is nothing like having a former student that gets to tell you how to behave in a board mission. Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell, for that. I appreciate it. As I stated earlier, I need to make an addendum right here. And I need to ask for approval of the three committees that have been assigned by the board. They are board-appointed committees, and they are Business and Finance, Policies and Human Resources. And then with a motion, in a second, to approve those committees. Sorry.
I'm sorry, this is Fonny. We have an iPhone on the meeting, and I just want to verify that it's Ray, because that'll be important for voting. And if Ray is on here. And they've asked in chat that if we could verify that it's him, because that's how he showed up in the last meeting. We'll have Brandon Wallace on the same.
Okay, the interpreter, well. Is there audio? Okay.
And he's not doing it.
He's not doing it. Not who to ask who that is?
It's fine, that is for attendance.
Yeah, yes.
The iPhone F. That means connecting to audio, we know who that is.
This is him. Wallace is on.
Yeah, he's on. We don't, Jason, we don't have Wallace on the screen. Wallace, you have your hand up.
Yes, hi, it's Wallace. I was just gonna suggest if the iPhone is not able to turn on their video to identify themselves, maybe they can use the chat.
Good job. Okay. All right. Now, I was asking, this is Sandy. I was asking for a vote to approve the three committees that we have as standing board committees. Do I have a motion? I have a second.
Second, this is Jim.
Any discussion about the three standing board committees? If not, all in favor of approving those committees, raising your hand? Okay, committees are approved. All right. And right now, we're gonna ask for a very brief report from those three chairpersons. Wallace, you wanna start?
Sure, I'm happy to. It's Wallace. So we had our first meeting of the Finance Committee this past week. And I would say there were three main follow-ups that came out of that meeting. And let me just refer to my list here. And these were, these were, maybe just to preface that a little bit, these were some of the challenges that were brought up with input from the staff and from Hannah Dye. And so I thought that was a really constructive discussion. We were able to learn some of the challenges that have been facing the team to see if we can maybe try to help find some solutions for those challenges. So the first that was mentioned relates to the salary reserve. And the issue that arises is that when step increases are implemented for 115C employees, which includes the teachers, the way that that has been handled up until now is to first deduct those step increases from their salary reserve and then subsequently replace those in the school budget. And so what, the situation that that creates is sometimes it puts the salary reserve balance into a negative balance. And that means then that the school is unable to hire or process any other pay increases, which is obviously disruptive to, not only to the staff, but also potentially to the, to the students. And so. So that's one issue where we've asked Representative Blackwell to see if there's anything that can be done to modify the procedure so that, so that that won't happen in the future. There's no resolution yet, but it is one that we were able to follow up on. The second one that was raised, second issue, related specifically to a potential ability to issue checks against the revenue accounts that the school has, for example, proceeds from sports ticket sales. And that's something that there is precedent for in other school systems and at NCUSD, in fact, in the past. And that would just alleviate issues that come up with, you know, the significant lead time that's needed to request checks from the central service that provides them now. And so that's another one where we don't have resolution on it, but it's one that we're looking to, looking into in terms of alleviating some of the administrative pain points that the staff is experiencing. And then the third item, and those first two, by the way, would also apply to the other schools. And then the third item is really kind of unique to the Morganton North Carolina School for the Deaf, which is related to the School for Science and Math. The first thing I would say on that is, I think, all of the board and the administration of the school feel strongly that the partnership with the School for Science and Math is really important and that having a good neighbor relationship with the school is really an asset. And it's important, so we just want to make that very clear. But with that said, there are some things that, from an expense standpoint, may or may not be covered in the memo, the memo of understanding in terms of how certain expenses should be covered. Certain things are clearly covered, but other things might not be, for example, the use of sports facilities. And so just looking into whether that might be in need of updating was the third item that was identified on the Finance Committee meeting. Those are the three main readouts that I had for the board.
Thank you very much, Wallace. This is Sandy. Appreciate that report. And I just want to say that I really appreciate everybody's quick response to these committees, the three chairmen met, got their committees together. And we were groomed in time for this morning. So next is our Policy Committee. And Ms. White is the chair of that.
This is me. Wallace, can you hear me? My microphone, okay, great. You received your legal memorandum from Mr. Campbell that shows that we, my committee reviewed the series 1, 1000s and the 2000s. And we really had very minor changes. A lot of the things we changed just weren't making it clear because these had already been vetted and edited by Mr. Campbell. And they came from the North Carolina State Board Association. So they should have been pretty good to start with. The things, I gave you a report that had the changes that we made. Let Sandy talk about it a little bit, 1310, which is parent involvement. And Chris also talked about that. It's a quite lengthy part of that group and probably is gonna need some more work and clarification possibly by a subcommittee. We added to 1710 discrimination and harassment. We added the name and address of the person that you would contact the DCSD to report that, would be the HR director. And then in the 2000s, we wanted to add to 2300 a requirement for four beats a year. Then we had 2302 and 2320. 2320, I wanted to ask our legal counsel about, in that, there was talking about the open meetings law, and it discussed, had in there a school improvement team. That would be a school improvement team that would include board members, right? Not just their, it's the school's, school improvement team subject to open meeting law.
So this is Chris. So school improvement team meetings are subject, believe it or not, to the open meetings. So your director was already on that.
Okay.
And this is, this is Mark. They do not require Board of Trustees members. It only requires that they be posted for any community members that would like to come and join, specifically parents. One parent is required to participate in the school improvement team meetings.
I need to ask Chris again, the 2302 that had some changes needed more to make it more appropriate for deaf and hearing audiences. Do we, do we discuss that now or do we wait until we approve?
When we get to the action.
Okay, great. Wallace, I, I don't know if you had a chance to look at your policy. Did you, if you did, did you find any changes or, I looked at it myself, is that for any, and then I didn't really see anything. What, did you have a chance?
I, I didn't have any changes. This is Wallace.
Okay, great. So really, they were only changed with that. And if you want to see the actual policy, that can be arranged. Members have those in their drawers.
Thank you very much, Ms. White. This is Sandy. Next report will be from Human Resources. Dr. Tate is our chairman, and they met yesterday.
Human Resources Committee met for five and a half hours reviewing everything that was related to Human Resources. So this is gonna be very brief. And I will just talk about the different topics, like those that we did agree yesterday. We introduced each other. Senior School Director explained and us understand the duties, responsibilities, and so HR. And what all that covers, which is incredible.
Wallace, is this better? So this is still Dr. Tate. Do I need to repeat anything? He said, do I need to sign anything a little bit louder for you, Wallace? Just kidding. My apologies. Okay, so the HR Director and the School Director both shared with us all the ways that we are going to be able to work together to get everything covered that is needed for HR. Those items include hiring, firing, termination, discrimination, disciplinary actions, any sort of grievances or complaint process. All of those were reviewed yesterday. As well as reviewing contracts. Any new contracts or renewal of contracts. And that would also be included, non-renewal of contracts. We reviewed the current status of vacancies, FML, retirement, resignations, and workers' comp. We then also received legal updates from Chris. Similar to what he has shared with us today, which we had reviewed yesterday from that memorandum. We also reviewed classifications and potential changes that may come about regarding those. Also, organizations. The organization chart, the organizational chart, was reviewed as well. Any modifications that might be needed for that were discussed. And then finally, when we went into a closed session from our general public session and had a closed session portion of that meeting in which we reviewed applications for hiring for, that was a recommendation from the School Director for hire. Then there were discussion of concerns or any sensitivities or things that we needed to consider. The only recommendation we have right now as a committee would be that the HR office itself be moved. That is a recommendation we'd like for the board to consider. We will have more recommendations to come. But for right now, that was really the only thing we felt we could bring today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tate. This is Sandy. Appreciate that. And just to reiterate that recommendation, Mr. Patrick Wallace, that the Human Resources Office moved from Main Building over to Goodwin Center. It'll be a little more private. They're out of the range of the students there. So that was a recommendation too. Okay. Anybody have any questions for any of our three chairs?
I have a question for you, Candace. I'm wondering, would this, the students, are you using Goodwin Center currently or are they not using that facility? Because if that's where you're considering moving HR into, then I was under the understanding that students might be using that facility.
This is Mark. And right now, there's only one available office without storage in Goodwin. So I don't know where they go.
We can look at
and students use the building, yes, the second floor for speech language and PT and OT. And then for audiology in the basement for testing. There is no storage. That building was specifically designed for related services.
Okay. Other questions? This is Sandy. Okay. I suggest that Dr. Tate, you and your committee take a look at Goodwin Center and look for maybe available space there for HR relocation. Okay. Things that we can and need to adopt today as a board. Number one, in your Google Drive, we dropped the school calendars for 2425. Did everybody get a chance to go over those? Mark was kind enough to provide them, so we get those. Everybody saw. Does anybody have any questions about the school calendar? This is one of those things that we have to do before July of 1, so you're going to have a motion to approve these.
She's wondering, the school calendar, how does that process work? Or how that worked before?
You mean the development of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My office starts with a draft, basically, copy of questions. And then there's specific legislation that we have to make sure that we satisfy all of the rules and the factors that we're and then when that's finished, then we bring it to the school improvement team. And then they talk about it. And then when that's finished, we discuss it with leadership and with teachers and dorm staff. All of those involved and provide input. And then when we get the input, we try to satisfy all inputs positively. And then also, we have to look at Western Piedmont Community College's calendar and our county's school calendar to try to align as much as possible. Those are the three things we have to do.
This is Jimmy. So does that mean that at this point it's already finalized? Or could we make changes to this? This is still, or this is just what we have to accept or decline?
It is final because it is required to be submitted to on OSC before the end of April.
Okay, this is Sandy. Next year in April, the board will have input into the school calendar. Board's been given the ability to look at the length of the school day, to look at how time is used wisely, and to look at the calendar itself. Since this one has already been prepared, basically, what we are doing is approving this one. So this is Sandy. I would recommend, Jimmy, that we take a look at it. I think somewhere along the line, we're going to build a committee to look at the school calendar and study that a little bit more so that we're more familiar. Okay, are there minutes to the school improvement team?
I agree. This is Jimmy. I agree with you, Sandy.
Yes, minutes are required to be posted online. And there is a link on the website that is open to the public.
So this is Sandy. Jimmy, I would say, go to that link, look at the minutes from the school improvement team. See if you have any questions from that. You can study the minutes. And that way, it'll be a little more familiar. It's a good, good question. Good follows. Okay. Now, back to approval of this calendar. Do we have, do we have a motion to approve the calendar for 2425?
I will move, Jimmy. I have to approve the calendar 2425.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the calendar for 2425. We have a second. Second, thank you, Ms. White. Okay. Sandy, this is Sandy. Any discussion? If not, please raise your hand if you agree. Okay. Moving on to the policies that have been reviewed by the Policy Committee. And I will tell you that the entire Board of Trustees has participated in these policies. And we went, Ms. White and I went through and assigned policies to each member of the board. We would be including all members of the committees going forward to make sure everybody is helping out with I want to commend Mr. Campbell's office for going through all of these, and that cannot be an easy task. But it sure helps us. We have the 1000s and the 2000s to approve today. Maybe I'm going to turn it over to you before we take any motions so that you can leave any questions.
This is Chris. If you would like, Ms. White, I'm prepared to address the changes to the 1000 series, and then we could vote on the 1000 series as a group and then move to the 2000 series. So the 1000 series, there were not any substantive changes to those. So we could take the 1000 series as a group for approval with the following exception. And that is the Allison 1310 would be removed for discussion about a special subcommittee. And then the only other issue that came up in the committee was whether or not the school needs to appoint a Section 504 Director in addition to the other federalistic. And my advice has always been that, first of all, Section 504 applies if you receive any federal money at all, which we do. And then second, the Office of Civil Rights and the Office of Special Education Programs take the position that some issues can be 504 issues only, such as a field trip. May not be an IDEA issue. It might be a Section 504 issue. So for that reason, I've always advised that for a school of this size, that it would make sense that whoever is in charge of special education would also be the HR Director. So I defer to you, Mr. Patrick, as to who might be a good person to put down as 504 coordinator for that reason. But I agree, students at this school don't have 504 plans. They have IDEs. So something for discussion right now for somebody you think would be good.
Our special education coordinator is Heather Masaleen. And she would be the one that would have the most knowledge of that, but if we talked about field trips, one may want to consider the principle to be the most appropriate for that or even this director.
It would be fine for the board to delegate that decision to the Director and the administration so they can have some more conversation. I do not think it is likely that the school will get many, if any, 504 issues because of the fact that all students are covered by the much more specific individuals with this buildings education act. So my recommendation would be that we approve the 1000s, with the exception of 1310, and delegate to the Director the ability to designate a 504 Director in policy. And the board, Madam Chair, can actually say, so moved. Yes, you need a motion second.
Can I have a motion to accept the 1000 series of the policy? Except for 1310. With the exception of 1310.
And the delegation.
And we're going to delegate responsibility for the 504 coordinator to our director. Thank you. Ms. Jimmy, all the favors is ready again.
Okay, this is Sandy. I'm going to talk just a minute about 1310. The policy states that we are going to have to develop a parental involvement plan. And as I understood from the meeting, Mr. Patrick, we do not have the
And this is Mark. And no, we don't.
Okay. I will, this is Sandy. I will appoint a subcommittee to work on this particular policy only. And I'll get that out this week. And we will, the committee can begin to work on the parental involvement plan. And then we will send that to Mr. Patrick to go over and get that on. All right. And Tanya, I'll get that on this to you this week.
Chris, would you be like to talk about the 2000s?
Be happy to. This is Chris. So now moving to the 2000 series of policies. And there are some amendments to discuss, and then also some things just to point out. And I will start with policy 2230, which is board committees. And for the benefit of the board and the public, the legislation allows the Board of Trustees to establish committees and actually to establish committees and actually conduct business through committees, if you would like to do that. None of your committees are currently structured to have any authority to conduct business. Right now, the committees that you approved a few minutes ago are advisory committees to this board and they don't have any independent authority. Policy twenty-two thirty will need a very small conforming amendment that uh, the standing committees in that policy will be policy, human resources, business and finance. We need to add business to that and marketing. Uh, the marketing committee, if you approve this policy, will be a standing committee. And all members of committees are actually appointed by your board chair. So if you approve this policy in a few minutes, you will be establishing a marketing committee also, in addition to the other committees that you've already established. And I'll stop and see if, if Ms. Turner wants to address that.
Yeah, this is Sandy. Um, we, I am looking at a marketing committee. Uh, we put that kind of on hold for a moment. Uh, our, I call this the big three, business, finance, policies and human resources were the most present. And really most of all, so uh, and uh, on these committees, I will look to board and the audits note. We are looking at involving our staff. Uh, and so you'll be asked by me or one of our committee chairs will be willing to help out on these committees. It's um, it's a communal effort here. We really do want their input. So we will be establishing a marketing committee and this is new for us. And I'm very excited about it. I think it's going to help us. So. Mr. Campbell?
Very good. That's it. So the next thing to point out in policy twenty-two thirty is under subparagraph B, and this is for informational purposes. Ad hoc committees, uh, the chair with approval of the board can uh, can appoint members to ad hoc committees as needed. And you just had an example of that. Uh, you have approved um, a policy committee for looking at policy thirteen-ten, the special subcommittee to look at policy thirteen-ten parental involvement. So that's an example of an ad hoc committee. The other example, in a few minutes, you'll be discussing uh, student admissions. And whether or not there'll be a special ad hoc committee for student admission. So that's an example of that particular change. So that's it on twenty-two thirty. The next one to talk about would be twenty-three hundred. Twenty-three hundred, Dr. Weiner had a suggestion for a change to twenty-three hundred. Twenty-three hundred is your board meetings policy. It simply establishes the law of board meetings, regular meetings, emergency meetings, special meetings. She suggested, I think quite appropriately, that the second paragraph could be, have a little more clarity to it because it's just really kind of legalese. So the changes that are being recommended through me today for your consideration to that paragraph would be as follows. And I will highlight what the changes are. There aren't many. I'll read it into the record. As defined by law, an official meeting of the board includes any meeting, assembly or gathering together at any time or place, or the simultaneous communication by conference, telephone or other electronic means. And I've added, including email or text message, board members. To make it clear that if a majority of you are emailing or if a majority of you are texting, you are arguably having a public meeting. So please don't do that. Okay? So we've made that clear. Of a majority of the members of the board for the purpose of, and I've added this, considering any matter related to the school, including, and then back to the original language, conducting hearings, participating in deliberations or voting upon or otherwise transacting the business of the public body. The law is clear and the attorney general opinions and the cases are clear that if you are just considering something related to the school, that is the transaction of business on behalf of the school. So you don't have to just be voting or considering a report. If three of you voting members were to be together talking about issues related to the school or hearing relation, issues related to the school, that's a public meeting and that's supposed to be noticed. Can less than a majority get together for coffee to review things um, instead of text messages or emails or telephone? Yes, that's not a violation of the open meetings law with one final exception. And that is, again, there's a change here. However, attending a public event, ceremonial occasions, social occasions, and then back to the original language or other informal gatherings of board members does not constitute a meeting unless called or held to evade the spirit and purposes of the open meetings law. So again, in plain English, can you get together for a social get together as board members? Absolutely you can. The entire board could get together at someone's house for a barbecue as long as you didn't talk about school business in the schools for a true social event. If a majority of you were to go to a county commission meeting, is that a violation? No, it's not. That's someone else's meeting. Public events are not public meetings that uh, folks can come to other than obviously meeting of this board and then ceremonial occasions. Uh, if Mr. Patrick wanted to have an opening convocation session at the beginning of the school year and you board members all came, you would be there in a ceremony. And that does not turn it into a board meeting. You just can't meet two by two to evade the purposes of the public meeting law. So the chair couldn't say, well, let's get together in groups of two and decide how we're going to vote. That would clearly be a violation of the open meetings law. So I'm going to stop there and see if there are any questions about those changes. I think that was an excellent suggestion from Dr. Weiner.
This is Sandy. Uh, I do have a question.
Yes.
Okay, you said emails. So if I want to send something to the board, I'm sending it to her at the time.
So great question. So email, I'm so glad you asked this question. The meeting is the corresponding among board members. So you are free as the chair and so is the director and so is the board clerk to, and you board members, to push out something to other board members using email. For example, here's a newspaper article you may be interested in, or here's when we're going to meet, or here's the agenda. But if you then start conversing back and forth on email, that's when you can cross the line of it being a meeting. And it's a good faith test. And you can, you will need to kind of police yourselves. It's one thing for Mr. Autry to say, here's an article I saw that I think many of you might be interested in. If Dr. Tate was then to respond and say, well, I found the second, uh, the second page very interesting and I think we should study so and so. And Ms. White were to chime in and say, well, wait a minute, I don't think we should study that. I think we should study this. I think you now see the problem. You basically have now accidentally stepped into an electronic meeting. So it is fine to push out information, just don't engage in discussions. Yeah, great question.
This is Sandy. Ascend with that.
Send away, send away.
Ascend the calendars out. All right.
Any questions about that? Okay, the other change is in paragraph B, which is regular meetings. And again, presented.
I know uh, our meeting is open to the public. We have an audience with us today, for example. But let's say meeting is finished and, you know, I am sharing what was discussed in our meeting with somebody in the public because this was a public meeting. Is that fine to do or is that kind of a?
Excellent question. This is Chris. That is a hundred percent fine to do. Board members can share anything discussed at a public meeting. The only thing that you cannot share is confidential personnel information that you have privy to by being a board member and confidential student information. But otherwise, yes, sir. Anything discussed in a public meeting can be shared uh, immediately after the meeting.
I just wanted clarification for that.
So then the other change, this is Chris, is under the regular meeting section. Uh, Dr. Weiner wanted to clarify, the hope, I think, of your chair uh, and others is that once we get the committee structure up and running, the board will be able to meet quarterly. And then as needed, if something serious were to come up, that the board might just be able to meet quarterly at that point. So we've added, the board shall meet at least quarterly each fiscal year. And that is also in alignment with the statute, which says that you will meet at least four times a year. So that's the other change to policy twenty-three hundred. Any questions about policy twenty-three hundred? Okay, great. Moving on to policy twenty-three oh two. This is one that will require just a little bit of delegation. This is your remote participation in board meetings policy, uh, something that uh, Mr. Saunders is doing as we speak. So this policy kind of defines the circumstances for remote participation. And Ms. White has quite correctly pointed out that this policy needs to be looked at by your administration and your policy committee for resources and conformance with hearing impairment. And what changes need to be made to this policy specifically that relate to this school and this board? Because this policy was not written with deaf persons in mind. Um, I would not see those as substantive changes. I would see those as conforming changes. So my recommendation is that you would delegate that um, back to the director in the committee to just make any conforming changes to this policy that they see fit. Any questions about that?
This is Sandy. They do that in committee?
They can do that in committee. Yes, ma'am. Okay. And then just a couple of policies I wanted to point out before you take your vote. Policy twenty-four sixty is administration in absence of policy. And this is a policy that we've adjusted. As, as everyone knows, we've been waiting on final legislation. We continue to wait on final legislation and we're going to be adopting policies over time. And there may be some legal requirements and other things that immediately take effect that are not in policy yet. So what this policy does is this policy says that as the board is working through policy development, that the director is empowered and the administration are empowered to follow existing laws, policies and procedures of the school to the extent that they're not in conflict with any new provision of law. So this is just the provision that allows Mr. Patrick and your entire staff to continue to operate the way they have been operating unless it's in conflict with some new provision of law. We can certainly help them with that, but it's a gap filler. It's a gap filler while we're working on additional policies. And then the very last policy I wanted to point out is policy twenty-five hundred. This is a very short policy right now, um, that simply says that unless there is some other process established by law, hearings in front of this board will be developed pursuant to a procedure that is developed by the board chair, minutes to be made of the meeting and notice to be provided by the director. There is a potential longer version of this policy, but I did not present it to the board because I would like for Dr. Tate's committee to have an opportunity to look at the final configuration of employment status at the school. We think that what we're going to have clearly is chapter one twenty-six exempt employees, chapter one twenty-six non-exempt employees, chapter one fifteen C certified employees or licensed employees, and chapter one fifteen C classified employees. Each of those sets of employees will have different due process rights, different protection rights. And we want to make sure that the hearings policy conforms with all the different types of rights that employees and students have. So it would be premature, in my opinion, to try to address a more detailed version. So you can think of the current twenty-five hundred as a gap filler as well until we're able through Dr. Tate's committee to take a harder look at that. Happy to answer any questions and then I can give you a motion if you'd like one.
Question. This is Sandy.
Yeah, the motion, uh, Madam Chair, would be to adopt the two thousand series of policies as presented, including the amendments to policy twenty-two thirty, the amendments to policy twenty-three hundred, and the delegation of authority to the director of policy committee to make conforming changes to policy twenty-three oh two.
This is Sandy. Anybody say move?
So moved. Toss.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm thinking. It's G.
Um, this is Sandy. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, make, I'm raising my hand. You ready? Okay. Okay, this is Sandy. As Mr. Campbell said, we will be looking at the seven thousands and the four thousands next. Uh, all the board has the policies in uh, Google Drive.
This is Chris. Don't use the policies in Google Drive. Because again, what I'm going to do is send you the necessary four thousands, seven thousands with additional legal changes. So I don't want you to spend a lot of time looking at policies that aren't necessary. Because there's a lot of them and a lot of them don't apply to you. Hold off, I'll get them to you. Let's see a big smile from Dr. Tate. You're welcome.
Okay, this is Sandy. All right, um, uh, I guess I need a motion approval for an ad hoc committee for admissions.
Yes, and we can have discussion after you get the motion.
Okay. Uh, the board would like to establish an ad hoc committee for admissions. We need to do this before school starts. Uh, I've asked Mr. Patrick for his list for the school admissions team and you gave me no names, just varies. So if you will give me a list of who you want to be a part of that, then we will have the history.
And this is Mark. And the reason why it varies is because it varies depending on the student's age. So each meeting has different people. Some are consistent, but like the social worker is always there. The nurse is always there. Uh, the principal is always there and myself. But depending on the who, because we have two speech language therapists, it de, it depends on who is going to be responsible for that student as to which one comes. And then the same with teacher. So really it would have to be all the teachers or one teacher representative for the committee on. So I can do that, but the, the committee may get be.
Well, this is Sandy. And that's fine, but the ad hoc committee that the board establishes would be our same committee. Your conditions can be different as the situation requires.
Make a judgment. This is Chris. So this will actually be helpful so that you know what kind of a motion you want to make. The, the law is that your director will have the final decision on whether or not a student can be admitted to this school. And the parents for that student can appeal that decision to this board. So this board will not be getting involved and board members will not be getting involved in specific student admission decisions. So make that clear first of all. But Mr. Patrick will continue to bring together teams however he chooses to do that, to look at the admission request of each individual student to decide if they fit. The committee that I believe the chair is wanting to establish is to look at the policy for admissions. And something very important to state here is that the state of North Carolina, and I'll ask Mr. Patrick to address this directly in just a minute, through the Department of Public Instruction and its lawyers worked very closely with, I believe, all three schools to develop an admissions policy or was it just you and the Eastern School? Was it all three?
It, it was all three. It was all three.
Okay. So this is Chris. So the state lawyers, the DPI, and all three directors work very closely to establish an admissions policy that is in effect now. And that will be the policy by which students are admitted for this coming year. This committee will be kicking the tires on that policy, so to speak, to see if there are additional things you want to address, to see if there are tweaks that this school has the power to have its own admissions policy going forward within some certain parameters. So that's what you're doing. You're establishing a committee to holistically look at the policy and work with Mr. Patrick and his staff. So I didn't want any board members to think that you were going to be asked to attend meetings, to make decisions on specific children. That's a, that's a duty of your director, and the parents can appeal to the board. So that may help in discussion.
And I just, I want to clarify, this is Sandy, a little clarification. It was my, when DPI asked you all to do your admissions policy last year, was that just one year? It was my understanding you all did that admission policy for one year. I'm just asking that question.
That was meant, do I know that attachment area is set up because the state board of Ed had to do that? And then.
I think it's in the bill. That's why I have an ad hoc committee ready, because I thought it was just twenty three, twenty four year.
And I, I can say that, yes, we worked really hard with the involvement of all of the DPI lawyers to make sure that everything that was in that policy matched the law and that the policy that is established satisfies the law. And then we developed our procedures from that.
Hi, it's Wallace. I had a clarifying question and then maybe a follow-up question or two. Chris, I think I heard you say that the board would not get involved in specific admissions decisions that would continue to be made by the director and according to the procedure, more or less that he's been following, perhaps with changes according to a, a new policy that's put in place. But then if there was an appeal to the board, then the board may agree or may disagree with the initial decision. But only if there's an appeal, is, is that correct? Okay.
This is Chris. That is correct. Yes, only if there's an appeal.
And then I guess my follow-up question is, what about, I, I mean, I can't think of an instance where this would happen. I'm really just seeking clarification for the board. What about the inverse situation where maybe there's a decision to admit a student, but the board, a majority of the board doesn't agree with that decision? Just curious how that would work.
And this is Chris. I'm sorry, ask that question one more time?
I was just asking about a hypothetical situation where the inverse, instead of a, a decision not to admit a student getting appealed to the board, what if there is a decision made to admit a student, but the board for some reason doesn't agree with that decision?
I'm glad you asked that. So the law is clear that the director makes the decision on admissions. So there would not be a legal opportunity for the board to overturn the director on the admission of a specific student. Right. So you're down. So that's why it's important that the board understand the admissions process and have some real tight rules. And I, I think your interest and Mr. Patrick's interest are certainly aligned on that, and he may have some other thoughts on that as well.
And this is Mark, and I would agree that I would think also, Wallace, that that would mean if we made the decision to remove a student.
That would also fall, fall under this policy, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes. And this is Mark, and the reason why is, is if we were to make the decision to remove a student, then that still would come to the board in an appeal. So you have the five of you have to be in a neutral ability to be able to then review all of the information after, after. But we're following, we're following the letter of the law. So it, it makes it really easy. Our process was set up specific on with ten points that we have to address and satisfy. And then when those are done, the decision is pretty easy after that.
Okay, I'm going to let Chris explain this. We have found it in the law.
So that's right. After much paper shuffling, this is Chris. The, so what the statute set up, again, I think assuming that things would have been worked out earlier in July one of two thousand twenty four, keep that in mind, is that the state board's admission policy was good for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Okay? The board then has the ability under the new one fifteen C, one fifty dot thirteen A to establish criteria and eligibility criteria. And then the General Assembly has given you factors and criteria to use. Those are the same factors and criteria already put into the policy previously by the state. A few minutes ago, you adopted a policy saying that unless a policy or procedure was inconsistent with new law, you would continue to follow. So you are clearly going to continue to follow the current admissions policy. And this is where it gets interesting, and Mr. Patrick needs to weigh in on this. How many students have already been, new students have been admitted for next school year using this current policy? How many might come up for consideration between now and the beginning of the new school year? And you, as a Board of Trustees, could legally make changes to that policy for students who have not been admitted yet for next year. What your committee is going to try to be figuring out is, should you make any changes? And I think it might be helpful for, for you to hear from Mr. Patrick kind of what the status of student enrollment for next year is right now.
And this is Mark, and two have already been finalized, and then two are being finalized. And there are a few that we are, we are holding, waiting for August because they're not far enough along with the process.
So you're going to finalize two more tomorrow?
Yes, we will. And this is Mark, and we will finalize two more tomorrow.
Okay, this is Sandy. So we are going to establish an ad hoc admissions team committee. I have chosen co-chairs for that committee, and Dr. Warner will be a co-chair, and Dr. Kristen Todd and the staff will be a co-chair of that committee. So I need a motion to adopt that committee. Okay, so I'd like a motion to adopt that committee. And we have a motion to adopt an ad hoc committee for admissions. Have a second. Is there a discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Okay. And Mr. Campbell, you will be getting the four thousands to us and the seven thousands to us also for Dr. Tate's committee. And with that said, I would think, Dr. Tate, that you may want to schedule an early meeting with your committee than we decided on yesterday in relation to what we've found out today. So forty-eight hour notice. All right. Now, on my agenda, I have for other old business, and I was just looking at a follow-up. Camp attendance, how did we do, Mr. Patrick? Camp attendance.
There were, and this is Mark, there were forty students for the first week and forty for the second week. And this week it reduced just a little bit to, I think, thirty. And I ju, I just told some staff members recently today how wonderful it has been to see all of the fun. And I walked through the library today, and they were just having such a wonderful time in there when they were getting ready to go for their academic.
Yeah, that's, this is Sandy, and that's, that's just wonderful news. Okay. Mr. Patrick, so the board will know is. Wallace has got to say it, I'm sorry. Sorry, Wallace, pleased to see you. Thank you.
Hi, it's Wallace. I was just curious on the, on the question of the camps. I'm curious if all of the attendees are also students, or are some of the attendees not students that are enrolled?
This is Mark, and this year, we had all students that were NCSD students. And the reason why we did that was because May building is going out of service starting tomorrow because the air conditioning is going down. And we were having to use Hoffmeyer. And that is such a smaller area and space for students. So we limited it to NCSD students this summer. But then again, next year, then it will be opened up to outside students as well.
So I guess my follow-up question, is that something you've used as a a marketing tool or a, you know, a, a way to increase applications and admissions?
And this is Mark, yes. On every year, every summer that I've been here, the first summer that I was here was the land of COVID, so it doesn't count. But the next two, then we have gotten two, three, or maybe four students each summer from those activities. We do limit it to students that live in, in our state attachment area to the west because typically, parents don't move, but sometimes they do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we?
I have a question about the summer campus well. I'm aware that in the past, we had used it as recruitment. And also I completed that to students who were in the mainstream setting. And I think we could still maybe get some more students from the mainstream setting, letting them come to, you know, a deaf school and see what that potentially could look like for them. So just to think about that as a recruitment opportunity as well.
And this is Mark, and we posted for any, any deaf student that is in our area and publish it. Why? We send it to the EC directors in all forty-six counties, post it on the website and on Facebook as well.
This is Sandy. And I think that's a wonderful marketing tool as we go forward. It's the summer campus. Okay. Just so the board will know, Mr. Patrick is leaving to go on vacation from June twenty eighth through July sixth. Who will be looking at this?
Hannah, we have three. Hannah will be responsible next week for any like business operations. Drew also is going to be available by phone if needed for campus issues. And then Shirley, four, is responsible for Thursday and Friday, only for any student issues because the students finish Friday.
Did I have, this is Sandy, does anybody have any questions about any of them? All right. New business. Mr. Campbell mentioned to you that there has been a part of Senate Bill Ninety that talks about North Carolina collateral. And I would advise you to look that up on the web. And kind of familiarize yourself with it. The bill itself, if it passes the way it's written right now, says that in consultation with each of the schools, DPI and Department of Administration shall study each school's administrative structure, operations, and policies, including the cost and positions needed for the support of the schools. And they shall report their findings and recommendations to the legislation, Physical Research Division, and the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee no later than March first, twenty twenty five. I take that to mean they will probably be visiting the campuses. They're going to take a look at the O chart. And in regard to that, the HR committee is going to begin studying the O chart and see if we can set it up in a flowing way to take some of the responsibility off. So just wanted to make you aware of this. This is a totally new thing, and this came from the Senate. Just so all of you are aware. Okay. Any questions? Okay, all right. Candace, Dr. Tate?
How could we maybe make this more clear? I think letting the elders sign us in?
So I move that the person now, you've got the go-to chip. Go into section. Pursuant to section S one forty-three dash one eight dash eleven. That was actually the only one. Because that's, I'm going to draw this now individually. I think I checked in one fifteen C. And checking on what we think of the general statute. And subsection A six.
Have a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Are we going to a different room?
We can stay. Take a recess. Okay. Take a recess.
At this, at this is Sandy. At this time, the board would like to take a recess and uh, board members, uh, Dr. Mr. Patrick and Ms. Singh can remain and we're going into closed session.
Candace said, I can breathe now.
Am I talking loud enough for the wall? Um, are they non-voting members of my, the loud unit? The second question, or I should try, or I just don't want to have to make the motion, but don't make it.
That is a great, this is Chris. That's a great question that I hadn't considered until you brought it up. And I, I think that it would be appropriate for the movements to only be voting members of the board. Yes, I think that that's correct. I think that that though, unless there is a, a formal protest, then that's a technical error that the board can overlook for this meeting. But thank you, Dr. Tate. I think in the future, we need to make sure it's voting members who make the motions. Thank you for that.
Okay. Um, so report from closed session.
At this time, Madam Chair, it would just be for you to accept a motion to approve the personnel list as discussed in closed session.
Okay. Looking for a motion to accept the personnel that was discussed in closed session.
This is Wallace. So moved.
Thank you, Wallace. Second. Second, Mickey. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Get announced the date of the new board meeting. All right. Our next board meeting date has been changed and will be on July eighteenth at four o'clock by Zoom. There will be an H R committee meeting on the seventeenth of July. On July seventeenth at nine A M. Yes, sir.
And this is Chris. We may just want to note for the sake of the public that, and this is Jimmy. Sorry, sorry. This is Jimmy. Uh, eight, you did say nine A M., right?
Nine A M. Hey, get up.
This is Chris. Just so the, the public realizes if the committee needs to discuss confidential personnel information with Mr. Patrick, they will be going into closed session. So the public would not be allowed into closed session.
And just to clarify, it's nine to eleven. We'll have to get into that.
And um, Wallace and Jimmy, we have talked about and looked at the committees that we are establishing and the ones that we will continue to establish. And we're hoping that as we move forward, that we will be able to do a lot of the work by committees. And that our fours and our board meetings would be part of a report. Because the committees will be doing the work outside of the board table. And you all want us to be bringing back to the full board the things that you're discussing. Are you okay with that? Okay.
That makes sense to me. It's Wallace.
Well, we're just trying to cut down on the number of meetings. And as, as we move forward, I think, I think the committees, I attended all the committee meetings and they were one. We have women chairs in there. All right. Does anybody have anything else before I ask later? Four o'clock. We're just gonna look at the bill. Okay. Others? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for all the work you do. Appreciate it. We have your best lawyer in North Carolina in his silly sucker suit.
An inside joke for the record, eventually she's going to say, I'm the best lawyer on the planet. And then the universe, and I'll take what I can get because lawyers don't often hear nice things. So thank you very much.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. It's Wallace.
Second. Jimmy.
This is Jimmy's second.
So much. Good to see you, Wallace.
Thanks, everybody.